Right, but.
And they shouldn't be. They should be all at the same, they should all be at the same level across the board. And then for in a, in a specific scenario, so the idea is we should set it, so whatever it is, eighty percent, ninety-five percent, ninety percent, whatever, whatever that magic number we know, right? Then at that point, what you can do is you have. Really, really tiny little lady that talks squeaks and. Talk loud at all, okay, then you can actually go ahead and break her up. You know what I mean? But in theory, again, the idea, we also, you know, in addition to keeping them all flat, right? And I'm, and I'll only be speaking right now for one to ten, right? Mike's one to ten channels, one to ten, right? Um, in addition to that, we also have automatic gain control in there, so that once I drop, once my, the audio drop goes a little low a little bit, I'm putting, I'm adding a little bit of gain to it. So I'm actually, I'm actually doing this, but I'm doing this, you know, behind the scenes and off, giving it a little rough up, because I notice you're a little, oh, you're a little loud, okay, let it come down. Somebody acts like, it's like inside there, somebody actively managing a small little window, you know what I mean? So you got threshold right now of negative twelve dB, you know, kind of, kind of relatively loud, or whatever it is, but yeah, he is, that, somebody's talking over it, they dropped a little bit at twelve, I gotta jump a five, I gotta jump plus five, you know what I mean? To bring me, to bring me, to bring me up a little bit, um, it's, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna equalize. And maybe the same as the big guy, you know what I mean? It's not gonna equalize that, but what it's gonna do is just bring her up a little bit. And maybe the guy who struggles, you know, you know, but it's not gonna make them sound the same. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, so what we're gonna do is, I'm going to set these across the board, okay, uh, like, you know, on or off, or, so you can adjust, but next time you turn off and on, everything's gonna go back into sort of a, a, a straighter, straight across, as opposed to leaving them adjusted. Because it equals theoretically, you know what I mean? So you don't wanna have, you know, one really kind of, you know, oh, you said over here, just fine, okay, I don't have to, you win now, you know what I mean? You wanna kind of leave everybody across the board the same, you know, like the automatic gain control sort of take care of that. So what I'm doing is.
The only present problem that we were having before was the lowering, uh, the microphone on the end, because they were picking up the audio from the floor. Cause you're.
Right, it makes, yeah, it makes total sense, because you're picking up audio off of that, and it's, and you get the whole loopie loopie thing, but in theory, that shouldn't happen anymore.
Okay, so I am on this board, so.
So.
Yours, you're muted on here.
So your, your mic is muted and your volume is on, so we are.
Volume is off, microphone muted.
Yep.
Now, video is on, just so that people can see this guy's face, so he shows up, and they'll hear him over the speakers. Now I'm going over to myself. And my, uh, so I'm turning off video on my end. My audio has to be off, right?
Your audio?
In order for it to play out through these speakers, my audio has to be off.
Yes, sir.
And then also have.
And we also have to be selected for the, uh. That's wax. Yeah, broadcast DC, okay, yeah, so.
Okay, so what should my microphone be?
Yours?
On the zoom. Okay, what should my.
What should it be? It should be. Send the microphone.
So the microphone, I don't have some speakerphone? And the speaker is a person?
Rush on, yes.
Um, if you want to test with him, okay. And we are streaming, so we'll be able to.
So he is, he's the role model?
He's gonna be the role model, he's gonna be, huh? Cause I got, I'm logging here, logging there, alright, um. Yeah, um, uh. No, how does, sorry, um, can you go and see other room with your gang?
Mary, that should be good. Automatic gain control spread away. That, and he's using that one. This has been, uh. What's that? He's in the coast guy.
And the other question is, should we be doing this now, if not all lines are?
Hello, folks, how we doing out there? Check, 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 test, test. I hear me. Am I supposed to be able to hear you? Check, check, test, test. Welcome to the Rockaway Board of Education meeting for tonight. Look forward to a great evening with everybody and welcome the audience and students in attendance. Sorry I cannot be here, but I am stuck in the faculty cafeteria, but it's all good, we have a microwave here. Check, check, check.
Yeah, I just need one.
Hello.
Okay, I'm good.
You gonna try to walk me as well?
Yeah.
Also, your camera was bad.
Yeah, uh, you were, you, you had it this way?
I had it long way, yeah.
Yeah, so you were sideways, yeah. It's all good. There's no way to fix that, that's not you.
Alright, how's my head now?
Oh, much better, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Alright, so I say, I sound good, I sound normal, I sound clear.
Yeah, you don't look so great, but that's you on a normal deck, so I can't.
That is true, that is true, touche, my man, touche.
All good, um, yeah, I can hear you, I hear my echo coming in from this room, which is fine, check, check, test, test.
Sounds good, she's got cookies.
I got, the cookies you got there are snowmen and gingerbread, that box, so take that open too.
What's she got over there? She got chocolate chips, she's got some, she's got some good stuff.
She's got dinner is what it is.
Oh, you got, you got the Aramark specials, don't you?
That's it.
Yeah.
While you guys are still on, do me a favor.
Sure.
You swap, swap with me for.
Okay.
Is it just you? Huh? Just your audio? Yeah. But you won't hear anything until I speak into this microphone.
Rich, can you speak to me? Why are you, why is he muted now? Rich, did you mute yourself? You gotta wait, uh, thirty minutes, oh, you gotta wait thirty seconds before you'll hear. Yes.
Come on, Rich, join the screen, will you?
Rich?
Okay, there we go, so there's a button on the third screen, you can hear me now, I'm sure.
I can hear you now, I lost video, but I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, there's a button there, can you hear me still now?
Yeah, I can see you now, I can hear you now, you're not squelching, let me, yeah, I mean, if this is how it's going to be set up, then this would work well. But the, now we're just testing, now, now I'm using, um, Rich's special ears to, to see why the stream audio comes in so low.
Yeah, so this, yeah, that is one thing, oh, it's in safe driving mode, that's why, it's crazy. Okay, so we should be okay here, I see that I'm speaking, I'm on V, a video, is it working? And you guys are on mute.
From there to the screen, how are we pushing audio? So in other words, you're getting the USB from, from like there, right? That's something that's important, but that's something that's. But that's, but that's, that's the USB down going back to your computer that's here, right?
Should be.
So in theory, if I bring up the USB. How's your stream audio now?
Gotta be thirty seconds.
Alright, yeah. Check, check, one, two, check, check, one, two, test audio.
I hear you.
Thirty seconds for him to hear me.
He was fine.
Yeah, no, he's fine, why are you so low? Why am I so low, why is that so low? So what is this of you, this is, this is picking up, this is just the stream, right?
This is just being.
Just playing YouTube like, like your home locals forever, so board sound, so from our microphones are getting to here via USB. What's your, so this is your screen, is your own sound, right?
Yeah. Cause there's board sound, I mean, you, I'm, I'm lighting, but I think you're. Volume.
Yeah. You're pushing more than you're. It's here, right?
I assume that this is to keep up the volume from now.
Alright, so yeah, we want the stream.
So like, one thing I can say, because I love hearing, they're all audio. Are you kind of, are you more.
Okay.
That's not audio. Um, it's been, it's been, you know, I thought. So I think that whatever. Audio is here. Now. Should this be up, if that means that that is a full package song, yeah, so I would love that. That audio about.
That, that, that audio is about the sound, speaker out, speaker out, local out, we want pretty much stream out, pretty much.
Oh, was that me? Was that me? Was that me? I tried, why is I trying? Why is I trying? Why?
No, volume down, and your mic, just pick up the mic and hush it through, and then because you were coming out of speakers, your mic was picking it back up again, so that's the, that's the, that's the death move. That's your death move. Sound problem, it's not good by word. Ray, focus that mic.
You are pulling me away from the critical work that I need to get done before the time is over, before it needs to be done. You realize that? Time is time, time is money, money's time, we're running out of both. Don't you know it's the end of the year, let's go, come on, pull it together.
Check, check, test, 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 check, check.
So we're family friendly here.
Yeah, very.
That's fair, that's fair, I got it.
Family, yeah.
Alright, let, yeah, let's, let's, let's do that whole thingy again where we're gonna hear our stream.
You want me to go back outside, or?
Yeah, well, you gotta join back to call.
Gotcha.
All the above, I already did this, I already turned this up.
Are you ready to watch?
Because it's USB out of the.
Do we look program?
Turn it on.
They connected? We're on one.
That's awesome.
He might, might come here wrong, right?
He does not help.
Oh, yeah, that's not always a jam.
So I got, I got.
Check, check. Okay, I hear myself, that's great, how we doing out there?
Hey, you don't wanna go listen to yourself, you got thirty seconds to go listen. Oh, don't you argue like to, hey, I, I know this part now, hey, you got thirty seconds, I like that.
Yeah, I, so I'm speaking now, let's see.
He comes through clear, but I can't use desktop audio, so I gotta hear somebody on that microphone.
Right, cause he's coming in over the zoom, which you got going on over there, check, one, two, check, one, two, audio test.
That sounds actually perfect on the phone, so just so you know, that's coming in great.
I do sound good, right?
You sound, yeah, yep, absolutely. Yeah, I don't wanna admit it, but you know, it's now it's recorded for public knowledge, so.
Can you see, can you see the dais and all the mics and all that, I mean, all the, the cameras and stuff, what's your, what's your video looking like?
Um, I can, I, yeah, so I can, I have three screens, so the third one I go to, I have the, uh. Ooh, what is that? Yeah, I have the cameras, yeah, yeah, and I have Ray, is that, no, that's you, Rich, walking around there, uh, bending over, yeah, so, uh. Josh, I see you sort of laughing.
I will speak again into the microphone, check, one, two, microphone test, microphone test, one, two.
Perfect, absolutely perfect.
And I say, I know I'm loud.
Despite Rich, it's perfect.
It just happens to be me. Much better, still louder than his audio, but better than it was.
Better than it was, alright, hang tight, hang tight, hang tight. Alright, that might be really loud, but yeah, let's, we'll give it a whirl.
That one just now?
What? And no, it's just, it's just the USB stuff, your audio should still be the same, I should still sound perfect as always, to you.
Yeah.
We just gotta hear, Abe has gotta hear me really, really good, like you hear me.
Okay.
We gotta wait thirty seconds before he turns around and looks, cause he's got the headphones on, so he doesn't hear me. Better?
Yeah, he sounds great, I do know, I don't know if it matters, but visually, it's spiking every time he speaks. On, it's visually, it's spiking, obviously, on board, so visually.
Well, I'm saying, what is, what do you mean by spiking?
Rich speaking spikes board sound, which is odd, because board sound, sound, it should become. Whenever he speaks, board sound spikes.
In theory, in theory, it is, right, because what, because think about what you have, I'm going to see your reaction on the board sound, because that audio from that speaker, that microphone is picking up that. So you're gonna see something, you're not gonna actually hear it in the stream, because it's still reality.
Okay.
We have, we have, you know, automatic echo cancellation, easy.
Okay.
So that should make that go away, um, but you will see it. So, but how do I sound, like, as far as I'm concerned, on the screen?
Swap, swap out.
On that screen, and you got your volume up, the computer is still at a hundred, right, when I turn it off, it.
Testing, testing, talking to two riches, this is the worst experience I've ever had, testing, testing. Two riches in a room.
I'd say, almost had three, the third one's in Pittsburgh, so could have been really worse.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you perfect.
Okay, and I'm gonna just go off to the left and the right a little bit, so that, so here I am in the center, now I'm going off to the left of the, the microphone a little bit. Now I'm back in the center, now I'm going off to the right of the microphone a little bit.
All consistent.
Just trying to see, because the board members will probably be speaking at different angles as they move near and far from the, uh, microphone. And, and, um, Rich number two should be hearing us on the, uh, on the stream now.
I hear it great, I hear everything you said, uh, the microphones were consistently sounded, whatever, which way you went, so it's all good.
Nice.
Yeah, definitely, it's not as loud, but I'm just. You don't know, I'm, because, you know, in theory, I want to be able to, like, hey, wow, it's really loud, you know, um. I shouldn't be able to separate it from all, but I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why it's so, it's kind of weird. It shouldn't be limited, right, you know what I'm saying? Because I have it, I literally have it maxed out, like, USB volume, come on, you want to be here, so that you're getting the stream. My only, my only question is, why do I need to have my side so loud and everything, usually, usually like at zero dB, you know what I mean? You know, plus twelve down to negative hundred is, is what, is the range we have, and a plus twelve is literally max volume. Zero is, you know, a little ways down from plus twelve, and then you go all the way down to negative hundred, um. I shouldn't have to turn it up that, I shouldn't have to do it there that loud, which tells me that there isn't anything that we're doing, that we're doing wrong on our side, because USB literally comes directly out of USB two dot O over a balance right here, connected to the back of the computer. So the only thing that would be limiting.
I hear a loud voice. I'm out of the kitty tick.
So why wouldn't, so in my, in computer land, why wouldn't our microphone, why would it be that?
Wouldn't it? Um, because I set, uh, it's a, uh, a microphone, because I never speak in it.
Yeah. And soon as it's loud, it's the stream that matters.
Well, my remote is set to that. Do you have help? Do you want to accept that processor right there?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's what it is, but...
Yeah, I know, we're questioning.
Yeah, the question is why, you know?
I agree, I, it's important to know the why, especially when something stops working.
Is this in a bag? Is this, uh...
It was in a bag.
Alright.
You could have opened it, but, uh...
That's it. That's the, uh, piece itself, that's it.
So...
Yeah, don't do that, don't do that, don't do that, because he's gonna have to ship it out and something.
Gotcha.
Destroy my box, man, don't be like that, don't be like that, man.
Can't you just bring us the whole foods until, bring it back?
I think I was on.
Mine.
My, my constant rants and complaints have brought a whole team of people here. Thanks, I'm just, I actually stripped off my sweater, because I've...
Where can I hide these flowers?
Wait, we're presenting things today?
I can take them home.
Yes.
I thought we weren't doing any presentations today.
There is... Are you kidding me, there's no presentations today?
I don't know.
There's the audit report, there's tenure pins, service pins, we're honoring Tanya and Larissa. That's why we were taking bets on when the meeting ends, that's why I took nine forty two. And that was conservative.
So I need to make sure that I have all the presentations shared.
How many has anything that's being presented?
That's what I asked, but didn't you just say that there's a budget thing?
That is, come on, I mean, she just talked.
Okay. So nothing's using...
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll find out. I'm trying to figure out where I can hide this, though, until we're presenting it, because there's gonna be a bunch of people with flowers here.
Um... No, that's where they're going to be rece, those are, those are the people that are getting the flowers. I'd say put it in the cafeteria, that, yeah.
This one.
Who else?
This could work, is that usually standard where you open? Can you tell me who locked it?
That's why I keep service stuff in stock.
I'm over here.
Close all my projects.
No.
Yeah, we also closing your shit out, see? Rich, are you closing out your stuff and everything?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Does this, yeah, it works, nice.
You got your ready, our systems are running.
Being a hoarder sometimes pays off, eh?
Test, test.
So, yeah, I'm gonna be that guy, make you feel proud, go. What I'm saying.
Yeah.
Snowman and gingerbread man, nobody can... He bought three and a half, look at this. He did want three and a half cookies, which one you want?
I'm good, so, you got it.
There wasn't no box, it didn't make it. Sure, right, uh-huh.
These are good.
Now, Rich, you broke the bank, you bought four cookies.
By our, by all, in particular of our cookies as well.
It's on Howard's dime, so we're good.
Yeah, but, no, it should have been crumbled, but it's too early to...
Ah, now you know.
Typically, it's right, typically crumbled, or, I actually like these a lot. Crumbled, then, um...
Yeah.
I know, like, or...
Any presentations, any, any digital presentations, any that one?
Test one, test one.
I only have that up because I was just testing.
Hey, you step one goes in.
What?
You step one goes in.
They're all, they're all clicking. Oh, wait, hold on, am I muted?
No, we were probably muted in, in, um...
Oh my god, he has me muted everywhere.
Test, test, test.
Bring that, bring number two down.
You gotta do that.
Do it here?
Number two, yeah.
Test, 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 test. I'm not eating them!
Nobody, nobody, nobody goes that, nobody goes that close.
Okay, well, I'm back here now, I'm back here.
So what we need to do?
I'm over here, I'm over here, how about there? Five, 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 yes, Rich, Rich, five, five, what, five, five? Six, 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 how about six? You here with six? Six, six? Seven, seven, seven?